Laton City Council meeting this evening, which is August 24th. And I appreciate your patience as far as our posted start time and when our actual start time is, which is 7:06. As customary, we like to, we'll start out with prayer and a pledge for our meeting. And we take turns up here. And tonight it is my turn, so if you wouldn't mind, I'll go ahead and start with the prayer and then ask you to join me in the pledge. Our Father in Heaven, we're very grateful to be here this evening, to be able to act as a governing body in the best interest of the great city of Laton. We're grateful for the abundance of beauty we have that surrounds us and with the mountains and our reservoirs. And we're grateful for the many people that contribute, both personally as well as professionally. We thank thee for the opportunity to be able to make the right decisions, knowing that these decisions will impact future generations. We ask at this time to please bless us to act in the best interest of all of those concerned. And we dearly pray for the safety and well-being of everyone here and ask for a special blessing to be upon the school kids as they've started their school year this past week, but we pray that they'll be protected going forward and including all of the crosswatts and any type of motor vehicles taking them to and from school. We thank thee again for everything, and we say this dearly in thy name, Jesus Christ, amen. Okay, would you mind standing and follow me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. Council, I bring before you two sets of minutes. They were from the July 17 work meeting and also the regular council meeting. Does anyone have any corrections on that? If not, I'd look for a motion to accept as written.
I move that we accept the Laton City Council work meeting minutes from July 17, 2025, and the minutes of the Laton City Council meeting, also July 17, 2025, as written.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed? Excuse me, I failed to mention that Councilmember Thomas did ask for, to be excused tonight, so that's why we have just the four members here tonight. Okay, I'll go ahead and bring it back then to the council to make any type of municipal announcements or community events going on. So with that, does anyone have any announcements?
Thank you, Mayor. From the Parks and Rec Department in the city, a couple activities coming up in the coming weeks. First of all, tomorrow evening will be the second to last fest of the season. Hard to believe the summer's coming to an end. School kids know that, obviously, but 5:30 to 9:30 p.m., food trucks, shopping from vendors, live entertainment, and a movie in the, at the amphitheater as well. So go bring the family to the Constitution Circle, get some dinner, be entertained, and then bring the family over for a movie at 7:00 p.m. at the amphitheater. Mufasa will be playing this week, so, again, two weeks left, so the next two Fridays. Also coming up, September 12th will be the Park After Dark, great activity for families. That will also be in Constitution Circle here, 7:30 to 9:30 p.m., a lot of different activities for the family, smores, so bring, bring the kids to get sticky. And they'll be great, it'll be a great activity, so thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I have a couple of announcements also for the city. So Laton Communities That Care is our coalition, our community coalition, that focuses on drug, alcohol, and suicide prevention in youth. And so we have a couple of things coming up. One is our Strengthening Families program. This is for parents and youth ages 10 to 14. This is a free program. It includes dinner and childcare for children ages 1 through 9. These classes will begin on September 18th, and they will go through November 6th. And they'll be held this fall at Mountain View Elementary, which is here in Laton. They'll be from 6:00 to 8:30 p.m. This is a class that helps to build stronger relationships in families, improve relationships with your children, just all kinds of things that help us to build connection more with our young people. There's also a Born to Succeed Youth Summit that we're partnering with North Davis Communities That Care. This is on Saturday, October 11th, from 10:00 to 2:00. It'll be held at North Davis Junior High School, which is in Clearfield. It is for youth grades 9 through 12. This is a free summit, and they're gonna have lots of workshops. They'll have food, lunches for them. They'll also have a U credit makeup, so if any students have U's that they need to have removed, they have one credit available. And the speaker is going to be Braxton Nielsen. He is a speaker who we heard at the summit in Bryce Canyon. He is a bull rider, and he is very inspirational, went to Weber State and has a really great story. So if you know of any young people who could participate in that, both of those, you can go to dbhutah.org to register for free. And then I just have two more quick announcements. I wanted to let everybody know that this Saturday is the last showing for Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, which is pingperformopa. And you can get your $5 tickets using thanksramp, which is the promo code for our ramp commission. And then lastly, Davis County Health Department has launched an online tool to help community members find resources in one place, and it's called Davis Links, L-I-N-K-S. And you can go to davislinks.org to access this. This resource is for all of us in our county and has lots of great information and resources. So if you know of anybody who's just looking for anything that's happening in the community, if they need health resources, if they need any type of resources, they can access davislinks.org. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Or, okay, well, thank you, I appreciate that, so that our folks know that what's happening around us. Typically, we'd go on to our item number three, which is a verbal petition and presentation. And I think tonight what I'd like to do, I know that the Wynn family has not been able to join us yet, so I'm gonna pass over this item and possibly postpone it, depending, should they show up. But so let's go ahead and move on to item number four, which is our citizens' comment portion of our meeting. So if anyone's here to address the council, you're more than welcome to stand up to the podium. Please state your name. And just know that it won't, will not be a debate, but they'll certainly take notes. So thank you.
My name is Reed Sorensen. Do you need an address? Nope. Okay, it's my understanding that the Laton police current philosophy is that our officers will not participate in workplace raids conducted by the ICE organization, that's the U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. If Laton police were to participate in workplace raids, it would undermine citizens' trust of the police, and I want to maintain that trust. I think we should consider documenting the current philosophy into a formal policy. A clearly written policy could enhance our, or couldn't, could enhance our current good efforts. A written policy could serve as a critical tool for police to navigate the complex relationship with ICE by upholding legal obligations, by protecting citizens' rights, and by fostering trust within Laton. I propose that we ask, or perhaps re-ask, or revisit some questions such as four that I've identified. Number one, would a written and trained policy strengthen Laton's autonomy and Laton's position to push, push back on ICE bullying? Two, do we have the time and money to write and train a policy? Should we give it priority? Do we have bandwidth to do that? Three, will ICE continue its heavy-handed tactics of the past six months, or will the problem just go away? And fourth, would documenting the current Laton police philosophy cause Laton to miss out on federal funds because we might appear to be uncooperative? So there's a bunch of things you can consider about doing this. Let's have a strategy. Do we lay low? Do we appease? What signals do we want to send, and how do we want to send them? The future is unknown, but we will be best prepared to control our own posture with the ICE folks by getting the answers and then proceeding accordingly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan Andreason. All right, so I stand before you today to defend a principle so fundamental that it lies at the heart of our constitution, the right of every citizen to sanctuary within our own homes. And more specifically, within the standard, within the most sacred room of our home, that's our bedroom. As we begin each council meeting, we pause for prayer, we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Those are not empty rituals. They're affirmations of the values that guide our community. Among those values is the principle as old as civilization itself, love thy neighbor. It asks us to respect the rights, dignity, and sanctity around us. Imagine, if you will, a lion in his den. The den is the lion's sanctuary, the place where it's most vulnerable, yet so empowered to protect itself. To confront a lion is an act of courage, yes, but also an acknowledgement of the sanctity of the space it inhabits. Now I want you to transpose the imagery of that to an American citizen. The bedroom is the lion's den, the most intermost sanctum of privacy. When government forces intrude onto this space, whether by shining an intrusive light, guess we don't have the officer here, or the government places a surveillance device or otherwise encroaching, they are not merely observing, they are bearding the lion in his den. They are crossing a threshold that every citizen expects to remain invulnerable. Yet, in this instance, the city has exempted itself from the standards of being a good neighbor. Every other resident is expected to honor these standards. This city, by its exemption, places a convenience above the rights and sanctity of a citizen. The framers of our constitution understood that the freedoms required space, personal sanctuary. The Fourth Amendment, it doesn't speak in vague generalities. It protects the right of the people to be secure in their persons, their houses, papers, and effects. Right? You're an attorney, correct? Hope you understand the Fourth Amendment. The bedroom within the house is where the protection matters most. It's where citizens shed the armor of the public life, where they expect repose, reflection, and safety. To permit the government intrusion here is to permit a fundamental violation of liberty itself. It is not the, this is not a philosophical abstraction. It's the intrusion of light, sound, or surveillance into the bedroom. It is coercive, and it alters the behavior, induces stress, it fills freedom of thought.
Thank you. We get it?
No, I'm gonna continue on it. Transforms the bedroom into a haven in the public stage of unwarranted observation.
Excuse, hey, excuse me, Ryan. Typically, we only allow three minutes in public comment.
Okay.
When you're speaking individually.
We'll continue next week.
If it was collectively as a group, then that would have been different.
We'll continue next week.
Okay.
Or two weeks. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Josh Goodwin, here to talk to the city to see if we can establish rules around regulating and operating golf carts around the city of Laton. Obviously, golf carts are the new craze that have kind of swept across the nation, the country. And before we purchased one personally, we asked a couple officers what they would have thought, and they said there was, it was fine. And we ended up purchasing one, and we've had some issues with some kids in our neighborhoods that drive it recklessly, and others that don't. And so the cops have started cracking down on the use or what it can and can't be used for. But with Utah Code, each city within the state can regulate their own laws around it. And like I said, we've talked to different cops, and we've gotten yeses, we've gotten no's. So I would like to kind of just get more regulations on it so that it's not open for interpretation. So person A doesn't get something, and person B gets something else, that it's open to every single person, the same. Reasons that I think it would be good to have is it is, you know, it's a low-speed vehicle, obviously, which does minimize where you can drive it. It optimizes short-distance driving around the neighborhood or to a local grocery store for people that can't have mobility in their cars, or for, you know, older kids to help take younger kids to parks, or for even adults to take their kids just down the road to public swimming pools or anything like that. The maintenance cost is obviously less than maintaining a car, and it's just easier to access it. It improves sustainability compared to, most of them coming out now are fully electric, so not only is it quieter around the neighborhood than anything else, but, I mean, it's also producing less fumes and everything for the environment. What I would like is in that regulation, so obviously, there's different cities throughout Utah that have already came and made different rules for it. I would like, you know, an age to be determined on what age can drive. I'm thinking around 13, 14. I mean, a 14-year-old can legally work in the state. I don't see why they wouldn't be able to drive a low-speed vehicle around the neighborhood or anything like that. And then also, just like OHV, because a lot of these golf carts don't classify as low-speed vehicles or golf carts anymore because they reach the above speed that they used to just be for golf cart, or for golf courses, to make them take an OHV course, to teach them how to drive properly, to basically give them the same advantage that the kids on dirt bikes, ATVs, snowmobiles can already drive. And then, of course, it gives them driving practice for the future so they can become better independents, as we're seeing people get licenses later and later each year. Thank you guys for your time.
Okay, thank you. Next.
My question is, I'll be, I'll be much faster this time. Last month, my son's birthday, he asked for an electric scooter. I said, yeah, that seems like a good idea, like, similar to the golf cart. And I said, let's, let's start small here. Let me buy you a gift card, or a subscription, or a payment for the, for a Lime cycle, to try those out. So we, we looked into it and pulled up the map, lo and behold, you can ride them in Clearfield, you can ride them in Syracuse, you can ride them on Hill Air Force Base, but there's a big geofence around Laton City and all the other cities where they, it's outside their service area. This was a, this was a Thursday afternoon, I was doing the three, just said, ah, that's a little weird, I have to, I have to look into that. I've learned more since then. The very next, the next morning, it was a Friday morning, I was driving up 2200 West from my home in, in West Laton to, to go to work. It was about 7:45 in the morning, and I see a, a young man, probably between the age of 16 and 22, couldn't really tell, in a, in a white shirt and tie, walking down the side of the road. And I thought, wow, the missionary's out a little early this morning, but there's only one of them. And so I didn't think much of it, kept, kept driving down the road, another three blocks, until I crossed over the railroad tracks, and there it was, a Lime cycle that had been abandoned by this young man, who was now walking through the heat of a July day, probably trying to get to a job interview. I don't know why anyone else in that age would be wearing a white shirt and tie, walking alone down 2200 West on a Friday morning. But I, I believe the city should revise that policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing that there's none, I'm gonna go ahead and move on to our consent items this evening. We do have one consent item that will be presented before the council at this time. And we have Officer, Lieutenant Clint Bobowski that's going to present an interlocal agreement.
Mayor and council, Resolution 25-42 pertains to the proposed interlocal agreement between Laton City, Clearfield City, Clinton City, North Salt Lake City, Sunset City, Syracuse City, and Davis County, in order to formalize the relationship of the entities participating in the North Davis Metro SWAT team. The interlocal agreement updates the current one by adding the Davis County Sheriff's Office to the SWAT team, formalizing a budget where all participating agencies contribute to the equipment and training of the SWAT team, and establishes an executive board governing the team. Staff recommends the council adopt Resolution 25-42, approving the interlocal agreement for the North Davis Metro SWAT team. Thank you for your time. Are there any questions?
Counsel?
Thank you, Lieutenant, for bringing this item forth. Would you be kind just to explain how the management of this SWAT team operated before, and the difference in fiscal management of what you're asking for now?
Sure. Prior to this proposed interlocal agreement, the SWAT team was maintained and managed by Laton City Police Department. As far as the funding source, each participating agency who supplied manpower purchased the equipment for their individual officers, which left Laton City purchasing, or paying for a lot of the training, as well as the disposable equipment that we use on the team. This interlocal agreement establishes the executive board. However, I am the current commander of the Laton City SWAT team, so Laton City still maintains and manages the team. Through me as the commander, the executive board establishes who that commander is. The current funding now, all participating agencies will provide funding into the budget, and then that's divided up between whether they have manpower or whether they don't have any manpower and are paying an assessment fee.
Okay. Councilman Black.
You mentioned in the work meeting that there's kind of been a separation between the North SWAT and the South SWAT. So I was just curious, North Salt Lake is in this, and that's at the very south end of the county. Are you, maybe where, where did that come from, and are you anticipating additional municipalities that are closer to us being a part of this as it moves forward?
Yeah, I don't have any more anticipation of any other agencies joining the team at this time. As far as why North Salt Lake joined our team, Chief Black and Chief Swanson have a strong relationship. I don't know the particulars, as North Salt Lake's been a part of our SWAT team for a long time, but I would imagine it stems from the relationship with Chief Swanson and Chief Black, who's the chief with North Salt Lake Police Department.
Okay. And, I mean, previously, as Councilmember Smith Edmondson said, Chief Swanson was kind of in charge beforehand, and now, from the discussion, it's been, you know, there's one vote for one agency. And we've had some situations in the past where we have a, you know, a city the size of Sunset having the same vote as the size of City of Laton. And I'm just curious, maybe if you guys have had those internal discussions, and if you feel comfortable with, with us having maybe just a disproportionate vote, considering how maybe more, maybe the resources we're putting into it?
Certainly. The, where this came from, I spent about nine years with the Davis Metro Narcotics Strike Force, four years as an agent, about another four and a half, five years as a supervisor. And so this MOU was really born from that MOU that establishes the same type of executive board, very similar. That MOU has been in place, that structure's been in place since 2004, and Laton City has continued to run and maintain the strike force since then. So as far as the disproportionate vote, I am comfortable with it. Laton City continues to, to remain probably the only entity within the team that's capable of running the SWAT team. And so the chief, myself, as the commander, we're very comfortable with, with how it's set up. The bylaws are still a working document, and it allows us to change as we continue to progress as a team.
Can, can I just add to that? Because I had the same conversation with the chief and expressed the same concerns. And he, he did express that they were very comfortable with it, and they felt like the structure was good, and the, the composition of the board, everybody was, understood the importance of Laton City as a member. But one thing that is in this agreement that I'm sure you saw is, is that we can withdraw at any time for any reason, and so if there was some sort of issue, we could just withdraw.
Okay, Councilman Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Lieutenant, I'm also curious, you mentioned some of the cities offer up officers to, to serve, and then others, they are charged in assessment, they don't have enough officers to, to help out. Could you explain the makeup of the, of the team currently, and how it's gonna look?
Yeah, absolutely.
How many officers do we have, other, in which cities are, have assessments and not officers?
Sure. So, and I, and I don't mean to correct a council member, it's just, it's not that they don't have enough officers to, to submit to the SWAT team. Selection on the SWAT team is a significant selection process. Our team goes through a two-day selection process. If you make it through that as a qualified candidate, you go through a week-long, what we call SWAT school here within our team. And then after that, you go through a 100-hour SWAT certification course in six days, so 100 hours of work in six days. And so you have to complete all three of those things to be selected, to become a member on the SWAT team. And so it's not necessarily that they don't have enough manpower, it's just sometimes officers that comprise of those departments aren't ready to meet those standards. We've seen officers from all of our participating agencies try out for SWAT, just some of them haven't been able to make it yet. So, again, I don't mean to correct you, I just wanted to clarify that, you know.
Yeah, that's good to know.
We're not saying we're all, we're better than one agency, it's just, it's a difficult process to get selected to the SWAT team. And we want to continue to maintain that because I think you as council members and our citizens that we support have a high expectation of, of an officer that is on the SWAT team and what we're responsible to do. So as far as your second question, the current makeup of the team, Laton City has the most members on the SWAT team, so we have 16 Laton City police officers, and then four Laton City firefighters, who are tactical medics. And then next, we have one officer from Davis County, we have one officer from North Salt Lake, we have three officers from Clearfield City, and one officer from Clinton City. And so I know there's a long list, so that leaves Sunset and Syracuse, who currently do not have officers on the team. And so they are paying an assessment fee that helps, goes to support our equipment and our training.
After that explanation, we should all appreciate a SWAT member more than ever. I mean, not that we don't appreciate our officers, but jeez.
Commander.
And the commander, yeah.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, that was a good explanation. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if not, then counsel, I'll bring this back to you for action.
Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 25-42, this interlocal cooperation agreement for the North Davis Metro SWAT team.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on down to our public hearing portion of our meeting, and it's regarding a rezone request, and Mr. Weston Appeloni will be presenting that information to us.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Good to be with you tonight. Before you tonight is a rezone request located at the northwest side of Highway 193 and North Hills Drive. You can see it on the map here in red. There's a zoomed-in photo of this. The applicant who's here tonight is also the property owner, Matthew Reed. He's requesting the rezone from CH to M1. The applicant is requesting this, he operates a, the, the business elevated property maintenance, which is a contractor's storage yard. You can see the equipment that's stored outside. It was identified that there are compliance issues with this property, and to bring this into complete compliance would be going through a rezone process and then establishing the screening requirements for the then establishing the screening requirements for the contractor's storage yard outside, and then updating the landscaping to make sure it's compliant with the landscaping requirements. We've been actively working with the business owner, and he's been very cooperative. This was, well, I should say this first, the general plan does identify this property as planned for manufacturing, and so zoning it to M1 is compliant with the general plan. The Planning Commission did review this on July 22nd, and unanimously voted to forward a recommendation of approval to the council to rezone from CH to M1. Staff supports the recommendation of the Planning Commission. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, counsel, do you have any questions before we open it up?
Just one there.
Sure.
Is the front of the, is the barbecue place still?
It's still there. It'll stay there.
And this is the back part of the...
This'll be the back part. Yep.
Thanks.
Excuse me, sir. You're out, sorry. I don't want to call you out of order. Failed the first time, but let's proceed, and you'll be able to speak here in a minute at a public hearing. Okay. Did you get your question answered, right? Okay. Do we have any others?
Just one. This question was brought up in the work meeting. I was gonna ask, and Councilmember Blotzen asked it, but the question was how this even rezone came about, if it was because the owner decided to make this change, or was it based out of some kind of noncompliance?
This came through code compliance, which required the applicant to submit a business license, and through the review of that, it was identified that they couldn't operate the way they're operating under that zone. And so it was through working with the business owner and staff, recognizing that a rezone to M1 would be sufficient with the additional screening and landscaping that I previously mentioned.
So it was because the property owner put in a new business license application?
It was code compliance that recognized it. That was the issue. That's where it started.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, then I need a motion to open the public hearing regarding our rezone request.
Motion to open the public hearing?
Okay. Okay, the public hearing is now open, so if anyone wishes to address this or comment on this item, you're more than welcome to. Once again, step up to the podium and state your name. Okay. Seeing that there's none, I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council then, for action regarding our rezone request. Counsel, I'll need you to close the public hearing, and then go ahead and state the ordinance, if you could.
Madam Mayor, I move that we close the public hearing and adopt Ordinance 25-20.
Okay. It's been moved in second that we adopt Ordinance 25-20. Being that it's a public hearing, I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. I'll start down here with Councilwoman Roberts.
Yes.
Councilman Blotzen?
I'd just like to explain, I appreciate the business owner being here, appreciate, it sounds like you had a good relationships and discussions with the city. I just appreciate that very much. It's kind of hard to come by sometimes, so we appreciate you doing that. And with that, I bow, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Morris?
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Smith Edmondson?
I also vote aye, and wanted to just highlight that with these rezone changes, the fact that the general plan does identify this as M1 in the future, this is right in line with what we have already looked at as a city and want to happen. So I vote aye. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, there you have it. It's unanimous. So thank you very much for applying and also following the rules. Okay, that's item number six. Counsel, do you have any unfinished business you want to present? If not, that's pretty much the last item on our agenda tonight, and I could entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's been moved.
Okay, it's been moved, and I will acknowledge that. We do not have to vote on it, so I want to just thank everyone for being here tonight. And once again, I appreciate the residents and their input, and just be safe. Thank you.